And now I'll call this meeting to order with the roll call from Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Tyber?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I'll note now that to protect against the spread of COVID-19, this meeting is being held via video conference. The public can access and participate in the meeting using several ways which were included on the agenda. And this is being held in accordance with the Iowa Public Information Board. So that said, we can start our meeting with the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting of June 15, 2020?
Some moved.
The motion is seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. With our staff comments tonight, we have Mr. Matthew Tolan. So Matthew, are you with us tonight?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Do you hear me?
Sure can, just fine.
The public hearing for our annual Seal Co. project. This project involves seal coating 10 streets and one alley covering 61,000 square yards. Then also an additional 29,000 square yards and multiple single lane drives within our three cemeteries. And then including also eight additional city parking lots. Work will include proper surface preparation, proper placement and compaction of the surface. The total estimated cost for this construction project is $244,669.50. Funding for this project is provided by the city's street construction fund and also local option sales tax.
Okay, here's to Tolan. I'll now open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak from within Zoom, you can do that by raising your hand with the icon, raise hand, or if you're on a phone, you can dial star nine. So does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? I see one. And so this will be speaker who is last four, phone number ends in 0467. Go ahead, sir, or ma'am.
Yes, this is Jim Skane, 2215 Clay Street. And in this particular case, the reason it should be the seal coat as opposed to something else, is there a reason why this is this kind of project? And what specifically will it cover as far as the streets that are be involved with?
Okay, so there's been a question about the streets that are included in this. Is that a lengthy list, Mr. Tolan?
No, I can, I can answer to some of those questions. So our Seal Co. program is part of our capital improvements project that's approved by council. And the, these seal coat streets involve a series of, of work where the street will be bladed and regraded. And then also placed with a new surface coat on top that will extend the pavement life an additional, we hope, two to three years. Depending on the location, the, the, the usage of the roadway network that's used there, whether it's a heavy used road or not. But it is a commonly used practice here in the state of Iowa. And then these streets are just, we're prolonging the life of these streets.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tolan. Any others from the public wishing to have a question or comment? Seeing none, then I will now close the public hearing and bring us to item or part E, which is a resolution approving adopting the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the 2020 Seal Co. project. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
The motion Dan seconded. Any further discussion? Then this requires a roll call though.
Miller? DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Clerk, item three is a public hearing on the proposed plans specifications form of contracting cost for the Clay Street, Clay Street Park Water Quality Improvements Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Second.
The motion is seconded. All in favor say aye. Opposed? That passes. And Madam Clerk, are there any written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Again, we have Matthew Tolan for the comments on this item as well. So, Mr. Tolan, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is the public hearing for the Clay Street Park Water Quality Improvements Project. The city of Cedar Falls continuing efforts to update and continue water quality improvements in the, in the city and specifically for Clay Street Park. The proposal includes two bio retention cells, one within the park itself and then one on, on Franklin Street. The plan also includes a perma alley along the eastern side of Clay Street Park. The total estimated cost for construction of this project is $182,864.50. Funding for this project is provided by City Stormwater Bond. And then we also have $150,000 bond or grant from the Resource Enhancement Protection Grant by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
Hey, thank you. I'm now open this for public comment. Does any of the public wish to speak on this item or ask questions? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing and bring us to item E, which is a resolution approving and adopting the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the Clay Street Water Park, or excuse me, Park Water Quality Improvement Project. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
The motion is seconded. And this, any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Tyber.
I did want to express, I mean, first of all, the, the need here is tremendous. I know that this turns into a river through the middle of the city during high rain events. But I did have a concern regarding the overall footprint of the bio retention cell in the park itself. The shelter that was designed and constructed two years ago is intended to be a stage of sorts too, that walked down into the green space of the park. And I think we're losing almost 50% of all that green space. And so I guess I was just wanting to make a plea that we minimize the impact. So we continue to preserve some of the audience area for performance or, or other uses. Green space is now in short supply at Clay Street Park with the, the hard surfacing of the, of the basketball court as well as the park equipment. So, you know, to the extent possible, I don't know if that's working with depth or possibly modifying its location. I want to be extra sensitive to that part because so much green space is being lost. And by green space, I mean manicured mode area.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Over to Eric, go ahead.
Mr. Tolan, how come we got a grant for that? Did you say we got a grant? Hundred thousand dollars?
Yep. So one of the big improvements with this park currently out there, there is an existing bio cell. It's a little bit undersized. And so with this project, expanding that bio retention cell and then including the perma alley allows us additional storage. But also there's a, there's a good feature of water quality in there where we're reducing the amount of load reduction in terms of nitrate and phosphorus and other contaminants in our water supply before it reaches what would be Dry Run Creek. And so these improvements are helping our, our public storm sewer system and then down the line as well as it reaches the Dry Run Creek and into the Cedar River.
Are those grants available annually?
Ah, yes. So the REAP grant program, depending on its classation and what's involved with the scope of the project, those are available on an annual basis.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, then it's the motion is seconded and this requires a roll call vote.
Miller? DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item we have is item four, public hearing on the fiscal year 20, annual action plan for community development block grant and home project, home program funding. Is there a motion to approve proof of publication?
Some moved.
The motion is seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So Madam Clerk, any written communications on this item?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
And with staff comments, we have Director Sheets.
Thank you. So this is the start of discussing our CBG entitlement grant funds that we're receiving for federal fiscal year 20. We have received notification that we are receiving an allocation of $273,111. And we have outlined in the memo attached in the packet the primary activities that we would spend those funds on for this coming year. And that is in compliance with our five-year consolidated plan that we adopted about a year ago. With one note that we anticipate that we will try to work to spend the funding on a neighborhood recreational entity, provided that HUD would approve such activity. There are a number of criteria that we will have to meet in order to extend the funds in that manner. And so if we're not able to do that, then our backup plan is to continue forward with other infrastructure improvement projects. For example, this past year, and we're, we're just now kicking off the construction of several sidewalks in low and moderate income areas. And so we, we could continue with more of that if it were to be found that a park project is not eligible.
Okay, thank you. I'll move it now forward into public comments. Does anyone from the public wish to speak or ask questions on this item? Mr. Skane, so go ahead, Mr. Skane.
Yes, now.
Yes, sir.
On this, you know, Mr. Mayor, that none of the public have access to the package. And therefore, when you talk about what's in this particular proposal, none of us out here know what's, what's being produced and what Director Sheets indicated was very sparse and it really doesn't clear, indicate what the $270,000 is going to be expended for. Because, because really, depending upon the packet, the, the council has one side of the story, but there's maybe other sides of the story that are not presented in the package.
Thank you, Mr. Skane. We've covered this many times in the past, that the, the council packets are available to the public at the city's website. You have access as public members to the exact same information that I have and the council has. I just wanted to clarify that. So I will now, is anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, again, you can press the raise hand icon on your Zoom screen or press star nine if you're on the phone. And seeing none, I'll now close that public hearing and bring it back to item 4E, which is a resolution approving and authorizing submission of the FY 2020 Annual Action Plan for Community Block Grant Home Program Funding. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
The motion is seconded. Any council questions or discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Harding, go ahead.
To Mr. Skane's point, I do believe that it, in the packet, everything that the city has broken down, the money to go towards, it's all outlined in there, correct? Stephanie or Director Sheets?
Yes, yes, that is correct. And the plan has been available for 30 days. We did publish a notice in the Courier and a phone call to me. I could have outlined that to anybody who had questions.
Yeah, just wanted to kind of clarify that, that it is broken down how we would want to spend this money. So that was all.
Okay, thank you, Council Harding. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, then this, the motion is seconded and this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires? Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is five, the public hearing on a proposed agreement for private development with Community Bank and Trust, a division of Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust Company. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Some moved.
The motion is seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. So speaking on this item is Mr. Shane Graham, our Economic Development Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have before council tonight is an agreement for private development between the city and Community Bank and Trust. If council might remember, back at their last meeting on June 15, council approved a site plan for a new 2,900 square foot bank building right across the street from City Hall here at 312 West First Street, right at the corner of First Street and Clay Street. They're in a, in a fairly old building right now. It used to be a former restaurant. It doesn't really suit their needs anymore. So with council's approval at the last meeting, they are moving forward on, on demolishing that building and building a new more modern facility that will meet their needs. This property is located within the downtown urban renewal area and per the urban renewal plan, this project would be eligible for an incentive package which would typically include a five-year tax rebate on anything increased or what's the value of the existing building today. So the existing building's value is about 420,000. They're estimating the new building will have a valuation of approximately a million dollars to 1.5 million. So with that, with that increased valuation was what we'd be looking at offering the, the five-year tax rebate on that increased valuation only. Again, so that would just be the five years starting after the full completion of the project. So staff would be recommending approval. Again, this follows kind of typical as to what some other projects in the downtown have received per the, per the policy. So.
Okay. Thank you. I will now open this up for public comment. So anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? I see Ms. Bentley. So I'm going to allow you to talk here, ma'am. Go ahead.
She's still muted.
There she is. Go ahead, Ms. Bentley.
Yes, so did I understand correctly that there will be a five-year tax-free arrangement so that on the amount above 420,000, the, the bank will pay no taxes for five years?
Thank you for the question. For staff, Mr. Graham, are you able to answer that?
Yeah. Yes, I mean, that's correct. So it's a tax rebate. So they would pay their taxes in full. And then the city would rebate the, the amount of the 100% of the tax increment above and beyond what is existing today over a period of five years. And in the agreement, it spells out the maximum amount based on the anticipated valuation of the, of the building.
Okay, thank you. And I'll go back to, oh, actually, I see Mr. Seymour. So, Mr. Seymour, go ahead, sir. Name and address for the record, please. Get you unmuted here. Yeah, so I can, I can press unmute on my end, but then he still is muted. There we are. Mr. Seymour, good to see you tonight. Go ahead, sir. We are not hearing you either, sir. All right, we've got Mr. Skane, okay. So I'm going to try Ms. Bentley real quick. Ms. Bentley, can you comment in now? Okay. Ms. Bentley, you with us? Unfortunately not. So how about, how about Mr. Seymour? So we've got some technical difficulty on this one. I'm going to try something different for Mr. Seymour and Ms. Bentley. If you, especially for Mr. Seymour, first, if you would like to call my office number, it's 319-268-5118. That's 319-268-5118. And I'll be able to put you in over the speakerphone. There we are. I see Ms. Bentley. So I'm going to bring her on through my speakerphone. Echo out. So go ahead, you should be okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure what happened. Now this is 16th, I'm sorry for the echo. I just wanted to, I'll quickly make it saying that we're looking forward to this.
Okay, so she said she was just looking forward to the project. I'm still not hearing from Mr. Seymour. And here's Mr. Seymour. Thanks for bearing with me, everybody. Go ahead, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for the technical errors here. Bob Seymour, 2710 Century Medical. Really excited to rebuild this building downtown. We appreciate the staff working with us. We had a few changes we made along the way and we're excited to start construction of this new building. We appreciate the tax incentives be part of this deal and I'll get going to town in a few minutes. And it's nice being on this side for a little, little change.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Anybody can check that on there? Did anybody hear that? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So any other speakers on the public? All right, so any other speakers on the public end? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing on that item and bring it to council as a resolution approving and authorizing an execution of a development agreement with Community Bank and Trust. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded, open for council discussion, for questions to staff. Okay, and seeing none, then this will require a roll call vote.
Miller?
Hi.
DeBoer?
Hi.
Cruz? Cruz? Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's gonna be that kind of meeting tonight. Item six is a public hearing on the proposed rezoning from R1 Residence District and A1 Agricultural District to RP Planned Residence District of property located east of Union Road and north of 27th Street. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am, for this item, we have Ms. Karen Howard.
Good evening. I'm gonna show a short presentation about this rezoning. It is a very large tract of land. It's about 170 acres. So I thought it might be beneficial to the council and the public to, to see what's happening here. So I'm gonna share, go ahead and share my screen. And just want to make sure everybody can see that.
Yep, can see it fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. This is a location map here of the large development. You can see here it's north of 27, west 27th Street and east of Union Road, is located south of Lexington Heights neighborhood and west of the new location of the Cedar Falls High School site. The petitioner is asking for rezoning to Planned Residence District. That rezoning district allows for master planned residential on larger tracts of land, has a lot of flexibility for lot sizes and dimensional standards, but has to be developed according to a master plan to ensure it develops in an orderly fashion with good traffic circulation and other amenities for high-quality living. To the master plan, you can see on the screen here, staff presented this to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is, we believe, a good plan for the development of the, of the neighborhood. It proposes single-family detached homes on a range of lot sizes. It does have a number of stormwater basins planned throughout the development. Those will be developed in more detail during the planning process. They are proposing a three-acre park to serve the needs of this large development. The Parks and Recreation Commission has reviewed that proposal and, and has voiced their support for that. With regard to street and trail connectivity, the master plan does show good street connectivity, approximately every, streets connecting approximately every 600 feet. They've stubbed the streets, are proposing to stub the streets to the property boundaries to allow for those extensions to adjoining properties. It does show good connections to the Lexington Heights neighborhood via Waterbury Drive and Cross Creek Drive. It has a connection proposed to the site of the Peter High School. It also has some trails along West 27th Street and along Union Road, and six-foot trails to provide good bicycle and pedestrian connections throughout the neighborhood. One of the biggest topics of discussion on such a large development is making sure that the project and development and the streets are phased in a way that provides good east-west and north-south connections. So provides good traffic circulation for the neighborhood. As you know, we've had some trouble in different parts of the city with, of streets connecting in a timely manner. So this was pretty important part of the discussion. The master plan does show multiple routes for connection. Their phasing plan, you can see here, is numbered on the screen. And this is their, the, the way they've planned out the development and how it would be developed over time. So you can see they start from the north end, and area number one, it's that connection from Waterbury Drive over to Union Road. So that's that east-west, important east-west connection across the creek and over to Union Road. And then expanding south to work area number two in the yellow here, and then further work, work area number three, they're moving down to that southeast corner. There's a separate sanitary sewer that serves the southern portion of the development. So that would be the access to the new high school and work area number three. Work area number four then would connect the two pieces of this development from work area number two down to, all the way down to West 27th Street. So that would be that important north-south, first north-south connection. And then work area number five is that second north-south connection to, from work area number two down through that pink area down to West 27th Street. And then work areas six and seven really could be built out at any point in time after that to fully build out this neighborhood. Staff does recommend a condition that there be at least one continuous north-south route from work area number two to West 27th Street within one year of the high school opening, which is anticipated in 2024. That would allow five years of development to occur prior to that first north-south connection being made. You know, depending on that pace of development, you know, it may be that, that work area number five needs to happen before three and four, and depending on how the developer wants to build out this development. But the important part of that is that we have that good street connection north-south. That would allow all the, all the folks in this neighborhood and the neighborhood to the north to circulate down to West 27th Street to be able to access the new high school within one year of that school opening. So overall, once the neighbor, his neighborhood is built out, staff does find that this would be good traffic circulation throughout this neighborhood. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission at their hearing on May 27th, they voted on, a vote of seven to zero, to recommend approval of the rezoning subject to this master plan and the development phasing plan, and the other development conditions that were outlined in detail in the staff report. Staff has drafted a development agreement, which was forwarded in your packet in draft form, which basically formalizes the conditions that were in the staff report as presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, after a conversation today with the developer, it's our understanding that several conditions they would like to reconsider, and they're not willing to commit right now to all of the conditions that were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, most specifically the phasing and timing of the street connections. So in light of that, staff recommends that council tonight continue the public hearing to provide some more time for the developer to come up with an alternative approach that meets the intent of what was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just would like to note that if the alternative that's proposed is substantially different than what was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the item would need to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further discussion. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. For Mr. Rogers, just a quick question for you, sir. If we do, if council does desire to go to a continuance of this public hearing, then what's the mechanism for that? Would I simply take public comment and then ask for a motion to continue?
I think at this point, Mayor, what, what happened is there'd be a motion to continue the hearing now, and then it would come back, because otherwise then the public comment and so forth would not apply to what eventually comes before council. So I think that's a step we should not take, just continue it now.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue the public hearing into our next session?
So moved.
The motion by Dara, and second by, any council, or discussion from council on this motion? Okay, seeing none. Is this a roll call or a voice vote?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. So all in favor of continuing the public hearing to the next session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this does remain continued for our next session, which would mean that we don't do part E of six. And is there anything else that I need to do housekeeping-wise, Mr. Rogers, to move to the next item? I'm not closed, I don't have to close the public hearing then, correct?
No, the action's completed. You can move on to the next agenda item. Sorry, I couldn't unmute there.
Yeah, first time doing this part. Item seven is a public hearing on the proposed vacation of a portion of the existing storm sewer easement located on Lot 1, Block 17 of the original plat, 314, or should be 312, West First Street. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Getting opposed? That passes. And is there any written communication filed with city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. For this item, we also have Ms. Howard. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, there was a similar request to vacate the entire easement here and dedicate that back to the city, 50-foot easement several months ago. We found that that was legally problematic, the way that ordinance was awarded at the time. So that resolution was never recorded, and to give time for the petition to consider their options. So we bring this back to you tonight, to consider a new resolution here to rescind Resolution 21932, which was April 20, April 6 of 2020, and then consider a new resolution, which was in your packet, to vacate only a portion of the existing storm sewer easement. The effect is essentially the same, it's just a different legal mechanism to get there.
I'll open it up for public comment. So anyone wishing to speak on this item for a star nine? And just a note for, for Mr. Skane, I saw that your hand was up earlier during the talk, and I wasn't sure if that was from the last session, so I did clear that out. If you wish to speak on this item, press star nine. I see also Mr. Dahlstrom. So, Mr. Dahlstrom, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, Brent Dahlstrom, just, I had my hand raised during the previous agenda item. I was asked to, to be on tonight to speak on it. I was, are you gonna be coming back to my comments, or?
Not tonight, since this is gonna be open until the next session. It will be brought up again at the next council meeting, and public will be able to speak then. So you're in the clear tonight? All right, thank you. So, Mr. Skane, go ahead, sir.
Even though this meeting is being continued, there were a number of items that could have been answered. And that was what the, the cost of this 170 acres.
Mr. Skane, do you have any, or comments for item seven, which is what we're on right now? That's the vacation, or excuse me, yeah, vacation of the store easement?
Well, I mean, you, you can, you can handle it that way, Mr. Mayor. You always do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, then I will close the public hearing for item number seven and bring it to council as a resolution vacating a portion of the storm sewer easement on Lot 1, Block 17. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and seconded, open for council discussion. And seeing none, then this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Hi.
DeBoer?
Hi.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us into old business, which is beginning with item eight, renewing reconsideration of Resolution 219485, approving and authorizing execution of agreement with Will and Perkins of Will relative to developing a resilience plan for the city of Cedar Falls due to the absence of a council member in our last session. Is there a motion to renew reconsideration?
So moved.
It's been motioned? Is there a second to renew consideration?
Second? Am I allowed to second it?
Second has to, yeah, it can only be, because we're still back at the original item, it can only be those who, we were on the prevailing side last time. So
Correct.
Only, only Mr. Cruz can, and those on the prevailing end.
Mr. Mayor, point of information.
Go ahead.
And this, this topic is open, and it was improperly handled at the last time. So to me, it's still open for discussion. The point where we're at, it really wasn't properly closed, if that's the terminology I should use. Because it's, we, we voted and seconded for discussion. We didn't have a discussion at the last, therefore, in my mind, it continues on.
And Mr. Rogers, can you give the parliamentary explanation on this one?
I'm not sure what council member Cruz is referring to there, but the action taken was, there was a 3-3 vote. So the measure didn't pass. Because there were only six council members present, the matter of reconsideration comes back before council under these unusual circumstances right now. So there has to be a motion second from the four on the prevailing side on the original measure, which was consideration of the contract.
Correct. And that's, that's how I read the, the rules as well.
Point of information?
Yes, Mr. Cruz?
I, I believe I had this discussion with Mr. Rogers, that there was no discussion allowed at the last meeting, when we did have a reconsideration vote to allow the discussion. You terminated my attempt at discussion, and improperly. So I feel that the discussion is open right at this point, that the vote was a moot vote, and now with all members present, we can continue. And the fact that it's on the agenda is not because a council member was absent, it was improperly handled, is my point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rogers?
Now I understand the point. The mayor's ruling on that point is binding now. If there was a, a wish to overrule mayor's ruling, it had to have been made at the time. And so, once that final vote's taken, then that is concluded. However, again, under the unusual circumstances, we're back again, because we had a council member missing. So now, this is only on the agenda due to Rule 41 of the council rules. And so, we're back to the original four who are on the prevailing side, who may move or second on reconsideration at this time.
And that said, does anyone wish to, on the prevailing side, wish to reconsider?
There has been a motion, Mr. Mayor, we're waiting for a second.
Yeah, so looking for that second. Seeing none, then that motion, or the reconsideration motion fails.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Miller?
I'm curious about process. Did, did the council person ask that this be reconsidered, or what is Rule 41? Is that because Councilwoman DeBurr was absent, then the reconsideration?
Yeah, so Rule 41, it's really unusual that this happened. It says, 441, when less than seven members of a council are in attendance at a meeting, an agenda item fails to receive a majority of affirmative or negative votes by those in attendance, then the agenda item shall, upon the request of any council member in attendance in the meeting, be placed by the city clerk on the agenda for the next council meeting, and continued thereafter on the agenda for subsequent meetings, until it shall reserve a majority of affirmative or negative votes of those in attendance. So now with Councilmember DeBurr here, it is possible to get a majority. In the event that an, an item, the continued under this rule is an ordinance, the ordinance shall not be considered. Okay, so that's not really relevant for us. But because that, it is brought up the meeting after, it was possible to, to have this brought up for the reconsideration, basically to be reconsidered, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess my question is, so a council person did a request that this be put back on the agenda for this?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, so with that failing, I'm, I'm gonna allow it, Mr. Cruz, but we really do need to move on. What is it?
In what you just read, there is no verbiage in there that said that there had to be a second to discuss this.
All motions require a second for discussion.
But the discussion was not closed, or was not even allowed at the last time. So I feel that was improper. But the discussion was not closed, or was not even allowed at the last time, so I feel that was improper.
We're working with the information in this meeting, and it wasn't.
I understand that, but.
So this, it's a moot point, what you're discussing, it's.
Not really, but go ahead.
Thank you, I will. So item, or that moves us into new business, which is our consent calendar. This is items acting upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests a specific item be considered separately. Does council wish to pull any item nine through thirteen for separate discussion? Seeing none, has anyone from the public wish to bring up item nine through thirteen? Yes, Mr. Skane, do you have single items you wish to pull, sir?
Yes. I have looked at each one of these, and each one of them is substantive. So if we could, because these are really significant.
So, could we have specific, specific comment you wish to bring up on each item?
Yes, I do, because they.
Infantry Regiment Recognition Day, that proclamation. Do you have a substantive comment you wish to make for that item?
Can I, can I name the ones that I want to talk about?
Certainly.
I did, ten, eleven, twelve. We can skip thirteen.
Okay.
Fourteen.
Twelve.
Fifteen.
And sixteen. We're only working in the consent calendar right now, sir.
Right, that's.
We understand the agenda. We can only, we can only discuss at the moment ten, eleven, and twelve, and that's what I requested, sir. So we will.
I'm sorry, I was, I was down too far. Yeah, so wait, wait a second, consent calendar begins with nine and ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Fourteen.
No, sir, that goes into the resolution calendar. I feel like you're wasting your time here, Mr. Skane.
No, I'm not, I'm not wasting your time.
On purpose.
No, no, I just, I just didn't see the resolution counter coming up. But the ones that I marked, I would like to talk about, so that would be.
Eleven and twelve listed, thank you, sir. So is there a motion to approve consent calendar minus items ten, eleven, and twelve?
So moved.
The motion and seconded, this, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so those items approved, and that'll bring us back to item ten, which is receiving and file committee of the whole minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Does anyone from council wish to discuss this item? Okay, Mr. Skane, go ahead, sir. Item ten.
Yes. See, this is, they receive and file to the committee the whole minutes.
Yes, sir.
Relatively to the following items. Now, A is probably not significant, but B, C, D, and E are very significant. And I'd like to raise questions about each of these.
No, sir, that's not allowed, and that's because this is an approval of the the minutes themselves, that they're an accurate reflection of what transpired at the meeting. This isn't a time to discuss the merit of the items themselves, sir.
Mr. Mayor, what does it mean?
I'm gonna mute him at this point because he's already given his statement on that item. That will move us over to item eleven, which is getting filing.
We should get a motion, we should get a motion and second.
Thank you, so it's, give me just a moment here. So this is a motion, or look for a motion to receive and file the committee of the whole minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The motion and seconded, any council discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that carries. Item eleven is receiving and filing the city council work session minutes of of June twenty-second, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and seconded, any council discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Skane, did you wish to comment on this item, sir?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Skane, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, on this particular one, it talks about response to resistance presentation.
Yes, sir.
And use of force discussion. Now, when you receive and file all of these things, does this mean they will have to come back to the council for a final action, or what?
Thank you. When it comes to work session minutes or work sessions, those are a deliberative process, and it could be that information is generated enough to either create new ordinances or new resolutions. In this case, there were some recommendations from staff, and that was included in the minutes of what the plan is to do. So that will be carried out probably without additional council action. Thanks for that question. Item twelve is, excuse me, it's been motion and seconded. Any other discussion from council on this? Okay, so this requires a voice vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes as well. Item twelve is receiving and filing departmental monthly reports of May twenty twenty. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
The motion and seconded, open it for council questions or comments. Seeing none, I'll open it to the public. I see Mr. Skane's hand there. So, Mr. Skane, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, now, we don't have access to those monthly ports, which reports are involved this time with item number twelve.
Okay, thank you, sir. That, those monthly reports are included in the council packet. They're available on the city website through the standard link for all agendas. And it's about seventy or so pages each month that comes out from all the departments listing their activities for the month, so I certainly encourage all residents to view that. Any other questions or comments from council on this item? Seeing none, this is a voice vote, it's all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, that passes as well. So that takes us out of the consent calendar and moves us over to the resolution counter. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does council wish to pull any items fourteen through thirty-six?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull fourteen.
Okay, fourteen, got it. Any others? Mr. Mayor? Okay, so Mr. Tyber wishes to pull seventeen. And any others? Okay, seeing no others from council, from the public. I see, Mr. Skane, your hand is up, so we already pulling Mr. Skane, item fourteen, and item seventeen for discussion. So are there any other items from fourteen to thirty-six she wished to bring out?
Fifteen.
Okay.
There are, there are others, but we won't worry about them now.
Yeah, okay, you're, you're always welcome to pull individual items if there's something that needs to be considered separately. But I've got fifteen. Has anyone else from the public wish to pull a specific item? Let me take a moment here. Okay, seeing no others from the public wishing to pull an item, I'll then read the remainder of the items minus fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. So, item sixteen is a resolution approving and authorizing a loan agreement for four point three million in general obligation loan notes and levying a tax to pay for the said bonds and approving a tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate. Item eighteen is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of agreement for painting services for sandblasting and painting of three pools at the aquatic center. Nineteen is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a lease relative to property vacated by the two thousand eight flood buyout programs. Twenty is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of agreement for elevator maintenance with O'Keefe Elevator Company. Twenty-one is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an access agreement for solid waste collection services at Hanover Park condominiums. Twenty-two is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a contracted education proposal with Hartman Reserve Nature Center. Twenty-three is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a surface transportation block grant federal aid swap project with the DOT regarding the Cedar Heights Drive Restoration Project. Twenty-four is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for traffic safety improvement program funding for the Cedar Heights Drive Reconstruction Project. Twenty-five is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of fourteen owner purchase agreements and two tenant purchase agreements related to the Cedar Heights Drive Reconstruction Project. Twenty-six is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a storm water maintenance and repair agreements in the Prairie Winds fifth edition. Twenty-seven is a resolution approving and authorizing execution for completion of improvements in the Prairie Winds fifth edition. Twenty-eight is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a storm water maintenance and repair agreement with White Coat Series Two in the Pheasant Hollow seventh edition. Twenty-nine is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a contract for completion of improvements with White Coat Two relative to Pheasant Hollow seventh edition. Thirty is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with ACOM for technical design services with the Twenty-seventh Street Reconstruction Project. Then thirty-one is a resolution approving revised Highway twenty commercial corridor overlay zoning district site plan, and this is for a convenience store, gas station, automobile service station in Gateway Business Park. Thirty-two is a resolution approving preliminary plat for Emmanuel Lutheran Church Edition. Thirty-three is a resolution approving the final plat of the Emmanuel Lutheran Evangelical Lutheran Church Edition. Thirty-four is a mixed use, a resolution approving a mixed use residential zoning site plan for expansion of a parking lot at forty-eight twenty Oster. Then thirty-five is a resolution approving the final plat of the Prairie Winds fifth edition, and finally, the thirty-six is a resolution approving the final plat of the Pheasant Hollow seventh edition. Is there a motion to approve these items minus?
So moved.
Fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. The motion and seconded, and any, this requires a roll call vote.
Miller.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding. Harding.
Aye.
Dara.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Tyber.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that brings us back to item fourteen, a resolution approving and adopting certain revised personnel policies. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and seconded, open for council discussion? Mr. Murray, you brought this up, so go ahead.
Yeah, so I just had some confusion and some concerns about the section of conflicts of interest where it was changed to include elected officials. And I guess the confusion was that there were multiple things that said there would be disciplinary action, and I, I don't see how the city, to me, it seems like the way it was changed, I could understand appointed officials, but including elected officials seemed like some sort of conflict of interest in and of itself, or not a separation of of powers, of checks and balances. So I wanted to see if we get some clarification on that, possibly amend that.
Okay, so clarification, Mr. Rogers was the writer of it. I guess for, to rephrase that question, is there an expectation that there's a disciplinary authority tied in when it comes to council members and say like a conflicted interest or violating city policies, or is that a basic, still a council policed action?
The no employees of the city would have any authority to discipline council on these policies. I don't think that was the intention, nor could it be. There's no lawful authority for for city employees to discipline elected officials, councilor, mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Harding?
I guess, yeah, I mean, it, it, to me, it read that way. I mean, I appreciate the clarification. But I'll just take number two, for example. Employees and city officials are not to engage in directly or indirectly, either on or off the job, any conduct that is disloyal, disruptive, or damaging to the city. Such prohibitive, prohibited activity also includes any illegal acts in restraint of trade. Now, obviously, we do not want employees or city officials doing any of that, but it's, to me, it comes across as a vague thing. It's tough to say, so could a blog or something that someone writes be damaging to the city? Who determines if it's damaging to the city? What kind of actions are taken? If, you know, to me, it crosses into a possible political, the city has political control, possible. You know, it merges two entities that I feel are inherently separate. So I guess, you know, that's how it reads to me, whether I'm misunderstanding it or reading it differently than it should be. There are multiple ones that read that way to me, and I personally think that we should clarify it or change it to appointed officials rather than city officials that are elected. Because, or clarify it further. That, I guess those will be my, my points.
Mayor, my understanding of Robert's roles is any kind of parliamentary body or legislative body has the authority to police its own members. The discipline is inherent in the existence of the body. So my understanding is that if if a council member did something that was inappropriate, it would be the requirement of the council itself to take whatever measures are necessary, whether that's a letter of censure or some other action, punitive actions against that member. Is that how you read it too, Mr. Rogers? There's nobody else to do it, except maybe they broke the law.
Mayor, there are certain statutory requirements and prohibitions that a lot of these policies incorporate. So it's, it's, a lot of this is a restatement of viable law, which of course council members are bound to follow. In regard to who's going to make the determination whether something's in violation of these policies, whether or not someone makes that determination, city staff would be in no position to discipline an elected official for violation of those policies.
Okay.
Just, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sires, go ahead.
I think it kind of tramples on our First Amendment and free speech. I don't like it where it says anywhere, an elected official. We are not employees, we are actually the elected governing body. So it, it, we should be stricken from all of this. If you go into the things where the city employees say something that's derogatory about the city, but maybe it is the truth, that's, that's even a little bit different in itself. I would rather have people speak up when they see things they believe are wrong. But to say a city elected official is going to be governed by someone else, we are representatives of the people. So that's truly our main goal, is to be the best representatives we can possibly be. And to have somebody over us saying, well, you can't do this, or you can't do that, that's completely wrong as an elected official, as far as I'm concerned. I think anywhere that's written in there, elected official should be struck from this because it's not a workplace. We are representatives of the people, and we are representatives of the city. So.
Mr. Sires, would you like to put that forward as an amendment?
Am I putting it as an amendment? Well, I was gonna absolutely completely vote no on it. But to have that be a resolution where you strike every single time it mentions a city of elected official, I would feel much better about it, but I also want our people to be able to speak up. I don't want anybody to be hushed and worry about losing their job.
So again, I'm asking for a motion, if you wish to do that.
Sure, I can. I make a motion that we strike anywhere in this, the word elected official.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Further discussion from council, now that we can talk about striking that item, or where it says elected official.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
I was gonna bring up a point. Like, Councilman Sire says, we're elected. We do get a token amount of money, which under what appears to be here, that draws us in as an employee. But yet, so Sire's point, we're representing the people, and those representations may be counter to what staff wants or the city has had for policy in the past. So how do you change policy if we're we're held to feed to the fire like employees? So how do you change policy if we're, we're held to feed to the fire like employee and, and not an elected official? So, language, and, and I concur with Mr. Sires, unless Mr. Rogers can clarify further.
Okay, yeah, so Mr. Rogers, if it were struck, the elected officials out of each of those items in the personnel policies, would that, would that render the rest of the document unusable? Or is it, is it, is that just a semantic, like one small piece of it?
I, I want to make sure I understand, the motions, there, there, it really doesn't talk about elected officials only, except in one spot. It, it uses the term "city officials." Is that what was intended to strike that? And, and if that's the case, the answer to your question is, the, the policy has been in place without this change for a number of years. So it'd still be a workable document, for sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Harding.
Yeah, um, I think what the intent, and I could be wrong, it seems that appointed officials, we're wanting to hold appointed officials to the, this. And I think that I could see the, the argument for that. But, um, and I see what Mr. Rogers said, it does use the word "city officials" on all, number one, number two, number three. Um, I know we can't make an amendment within an amendment.
Yeah, you can.
You can? Okay, all right, so I, I would, I would vote to.
Make a motion?
Make a motion, sorry. I would make a motion to, to change the word "city officials" to "appointed officials," and also strike the words "elected" in the first paragraph of the policy. So that "elected" is not in there anymore, it just applies to employees and appointed officials only.
Okay, so that's been motioned, is there a second for that item? And, and I mean, when I, when I run astray, Mr. Rogers. So is there a motion, is a second for that item?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, so there's seconds, and I'll open that up for discussion. So Councilmember Miller.
To Mr. Rogers, isn't there, there's a portion of this that is intended, I mean, with the background, it is in state law, is it not? In that city officials or elected officials aren't going to do business with companies that do business with the city? I mean, isn't that, isn't there a state law component of this too?
Most of it is.
I mean, I can understand Councilman Harding's point, I mean, the one, number two, "don't do anything that's disloyal, disruptive, or damaging to the city." I mean, that, that's pretty vague, and I, I can see what he's saying there. But there's a certain amount of this that is just intended to follow state law, make sure that the council person isn't working with the business that the city just hired to do a roadway. So, I, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Harding.
Um, I, I do see Councilmember Miller's point that this, a lot of this is state law. But the big difference from the way I'm reading it and the way I'm viewing it is that, that would then be enforced by the state. This is in the city's personnel handbook and seems to be, i- it implies that the city could somehow, to me, that's how I read it, that the city would then be the governing body over these possible disciplinary actions. Even though then we say that the council would have to do it. But it just gets convoluted to me, uh, over, why is it in the, the city personnel handbook? What, if it's a state thing, okay, then that's going to be handled by the state. And if we want to apply this to appointed officials that are appointed to uphold them to a level of standard, then I understand that, but let's leave the elected stuff to the states and let's keep the entities completely separate, uh, checks and balances and, uh, and, and governance. And the way I see it, let, let's keep it simple and keep it separate.
But back to your point, doesn't that also hold us accountable to the public? Which is what your initial point was, is that we have a policy at the local level that says, "I'm not going to work for a company that the city hires." Doesn't that do something, doesn't that reassure the public that we have a policy that here at the local level, not something going to state ombudsman or anything like that, to where that, "I'm going to avoid a conflict of interest while I'm in this role." I think that's good for the public.
I mean, I can see that side of it, but then who, but then again, it's such, it's not written to me in such a way that I can understand, uh, or see how it would clearly be taken care of within the city and, and then therefore how it couldn't be corrupted in some way, possibly down the line. So, uh, to me, I just say, "leave it simple and, and separate" and, and, uh, and just include employees and appointed officials. That's why I, I see it that way. I do see your point about holding us accountable on a local level, and I would hope everyone would do that. But, uh, as, I do strongly believe that we get better results with the separation of the bodies and checks and balances in place.
Okay, Councilmember DeBoer.
If they want to take out those words, what would they think about adding an item number ten that simply says that all city elected officials are recommended to comply with these provisions or policies? That way it takes out the disciplinary words that they're worried about. Because really, these are recommendations, are, are personnel policies that are good recommendations to do.
I think as an elected official, they should be expected, not recommended.
Okay.
And, and to me, I think we should be held to a higher standard than employees. And I have no problem, uh, I mean, I, I get it, I, I get the subtleties of it, and I know it's free speech and everything else. But things have worked pretty darn well. And I think as elected officials, we have an obligation to stay on the straight and narrow. And if we don't, or if we're complicit with some business person, it'll come to, to light. I don't, um, I, I trust our staff, I trust Kevin to put together a reasonable set of expectations. And so I don't see, um, sitting here and trying to micromanage what the staff is doing, is doing this, any, any of us any good.
I, I agree, Frank, I was just trying to find a compromise.
No, I hear you.
I, I, I understand what you guys are saying, I don't view it as micromanagement, I view it as governmental philosophy and making sure that we cover all the bridges down the road. Number two especially is very open, very vague, very open to interpretation and could be used in negative ways. And I'm, I'm not saying that our staff is negative, I love our staff, they've been great to me. I'm just saying for future of city, or the future of Cedar Falls, I want as clear-cut and as simple of policies that prevent corruption from ever happening. And to me, that right there could be used in, in many negative ways.
Mayor.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Back to your original point, there's a parliamentary procedure for this council, this body, to have a say in something if it was out of line for any other council member, correct?
Correct, council, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but council or any deliberative body has the ability to, um, discipline its members.
Oh, regulate.
Yeah.
Yes. The question is, how far does that discipline go, I guess? Ultimately, th- there's only a few ways ultimately elected officials or, or changes happen or their discipline, right? They're, they're, they either resign, they're removed for cause, or they're rejected at the ballot box, three, three Rs. So while council could, could discuss, uh, among themselves, behavior, maybe even pass a, a motion of censure, I'm not sure how far that goes unless it's, it's acts that are removable, clear violations of the law that fall under the removal statute and ordinance. And then that's a whole nother process.
I think.
My, my point is, it's, it's still a safeguard. I mean, it, it puts it, for us being political per se, that would put it back in the public's hands to push a cause or whatever, if they wanted to.
It certainly would bring it to the public's attention, for sure.
So I guess, and that's, I can understand the conspiracy, or I don't even want to use that, I don't mean that, that way, Simon. But I'm comfortable with the policy, and I've signed it every year that I've been on the council, so.
Okay, so, yes, Councilmember Cruz.
I guess it's more of a question to Mr. Rogers here, if, if we are reiterating in our city policy that are already stated at state level, do we need to do that? I mean, there should be a separation if we're doing something additional to clarify for the city of Cedar Falls and its, its officials. Then we would want to do that. You know, I'm looking at just the, the item in number two, any conduct that is disloyal. So if a council member disagrees with staff's presentation or interpretation of.
You're breaking up there, Dara.
Or brought forward, and, where did I break up? Item number two, conduct that is disloyal is stated there. If that is invoked when a council member disagrees with a staff position, are we being disloyal to the city?
I think the basic question is, who arbitrates violations here? And I think that that would be at the council, staff would have no power to do that.
Right.
I think that's what the mayor's point's been all along.
Yeah, and if I, if I tie that back to the motion that's on, on consideration now, that I, what it was, was striking the term "elected official" and then changing "city official" to be "appointed official" and leave council out of that entirely, the elected official, and I guess me for that matter, as the mayor. So is, is there any other discussion for that before we do a, a vote to say whether to move forward? Okay, so Mr. Rogers, would this be a voice to?
It would.
Okay.
On the amendment, to the amendment.
So, um, I read the amendment, does anybody need a rereading of it?
The amendment is to remove the word "city official."
But, yeah, remove the word "official," or actually change "city official" to "appointed official" and then to strike out "elected official" entirely at the start of that era.
Are we working on the amendment to the amendment, though?
This is the amendment to the amendment.
That is the amendment.
Mayor, if, I may ask one more question.
Certainly.
Kevin, why, what are we adding this, is there a reason behind why the two words are added here?
Sure, um, the, the thinking originally was, it was a little ambiguous as to folks appointed to boards and commissions, wanted to address that to make it explicit on the conflict of interest ideas. For council itself, um, the thought was, well, council has signed the conflict of interest form, which is a really good idea for years and years and years. This sort of codifies that. And while we're at it, the rest of these items, four, five, six, basically reiterate state law anyway. And so while the state addresses a lot of these issues, this is the, the city saying, and we as a council also agree, it's, it's important enough to state it right here in our personnel policies that we're going to abide by these state mandates.
Okay.
Do you, does council have to do that? No.
Okay, so with that said too, I, I do need to, to follow along with our public comment part two. And I see that Penny Pop has her hand up, so I'm going to open it for the public comment part now. Ms. Pop, go ahead.
So this is Penny Pop, forty-eight oh five South Main. In following along in the conversation, I have two observations. When I was going through the packet and reading eight oh seven, it seems to me that appointed officials were added to the definition of city officials. And if that's the case, I think that council should feel comforted that the transparency that, um, excuse me, um, the transparency that we're looking for in good governance is coming to light. Um, we all live in this small city together, and folks that serve or work on our behalf will eventually find themselves in a conflict of interest, and there's no shame in that. And there's also no shame in admitting that there might be an appearance of interest or a conflict of interest. But publicly acknowledging that, it, to me, it demonstrates the integrity of our board and commission members as well as our members of council. And it demonstrates that transparency, and it follows good governance. I think the public is being represented in a fair and equitable manner if we bring this topic up and make everyone agree. Um, I urge council to support the changes in eight oh seven, whether it be just the appointed officials or the city elected officials, we all need to be on the same page. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, Ms. Pop, Ms. Saul, I see your hand as well, so name an address for the record, please. I've got you unmuted, so I'll wait for you to speak there.
Lee Ann Saul, eighteen twenty-five Green Hill Road, Cedar Falls. Okay, um, so I guess my only objection would be item number two, in including elected officials in item number two. I agree with conflict of interest in terms of business and that sort of thing. I, I, the question I have is, who determines when someone is considered disloyal, disruptive, or damaging to the city? I agree that elected officials are there to represent the citizens of Cedar Falls in doing city business. But if someone on ci- city staff decides they don't like what an, an elected official says or doesn't like their vote, what's to, what's to stop them from saying, "Oh, you're being disloyal, you're being disruptive," um, or damaging to the city? I think that's very ambiguous and vague and leaves, um, a lot of, uh, things out in the open that shouldn't be. Elected officials are elected to represent the citizens. I agree, they should not be doing business and conflict of interest. But item number two does bother me. And I would recommend that you do remove elected officials from the language, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Saul. And that was something that came up as part of the discussion earlier, was that it's the, uh, elected body, the legislative body, that polices its own members. So the only people who could determine whether a conduct was disloyal would be the rest of council on a majority vote in order to do either a letter of censure or some action of removal. So it'd be pretty hard pressed to, to make that case there.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Miller?
In terms of other boards and commissions, in regards to, say, P and Z or Park and Rec or something else, the council could take that same action in, in regards to those boards and commissions as well?
Right, that's, that's a great question. In my talks with the boards and, some of the boards and commission chairs about this, they said that they didn't, I, I, I personally thought that they, they should have that policing authority within their own body. But I've heard from them that they, they don't feel comfortable in that kind of a role. And it's not provided in their bylaws, just like with council, it's not provided in our ordinances. So my understanding, it's not written anywhere, but my understanding is that if there were a, a problem with planning and zoning that, or with another commission, then it would be a matter for council to address rather than that board, uh, itself. Because they just didn't feel like they had the technical competency or the, um, they're, they're, they're basically working as specialists in a certain field rather than as a, as a legislative body. So unless Mr. Rogers would disagree with that, I, I saw that as the smart, or the prudent ways that council would determine that. Does that answer your question, Mr. Miller?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's a very important role to have at some level. So if it's just by our consensus, our understanding that it's council that is, is meant to take action on that, we'll definitely exercise that when needed. Okay, other questions, um, before we?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Who brought this forward to have these things changed? Did somebody ask for this? I, I'm still of the point, city officials, we govern ourselves, we're our own body. If somebody does something wrong, we're at the mercy of the rest of the council. We try and do the best thing, and we get fired when there's an election time. Uh, we work for the citizens, do the best we can, speak out, we have our freedom of speech, just as, well, I believe our, our, our employees should have the same rights. But I just don't understand, if it's state law anyway, why do we try and write these other things when we are going to control each other and have all those reasonings? If you just took out that, uh, I guess it'd be fine, but I'm still for, if something's wrong, I want people to speak up, that's all.
And, and I believe that. And and I believe that 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 would exist regardless because of how the law is written or how the understanding is of who controls council. But I appreciate Mr. Harding's point of saying if it's if that's the case, why even put that into the ordinance or the the policy manual?
Exactly.
Okay, so it's it has been motioned and seconded for for striking elected official. I I think that we've covered all of our bases on this. We could we could spin our wheels for for a long, a lot longer on this.
Mayor, can I just make one clarification?
Yes, Ms. Rodenbeck, go ahead.
I just wanted to state that, you know, some of this also has to do with our financial audit every year. So if you take one, four, five, and six, those are things that whether a city council's stated in the policy or not, we're still going to have to know those things. In other words, we have to disclose if there's, you know, if we have an elected official that owns a construction company that the city does business with, we have to disclose that in our financial audit and provide that to our auditor. So that conflict of interest form gives us that information to disclose. When you look at five, you know, one of the things that we also have to disclose for the auditors, if we know any known fraud that's going on or known improper actions that are going on. So obviously, five, you know, addresses if there's gifts accepted. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, some of this, again, why council members have signed those forms for years is be has to do a lot with our financial audit. Now, two maybe isn't. So again, if if that's maybe the policy that's causing some concern, then maybe, you know, we don't need to add it to number two. But I will tell you, some of those other ones do directly affect what we have to disclose in our financial audit.
Okay. All right, thank you. So that motion that's been seconded is to strike elected officials and then change a city official to appointed official.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Miller?
So Mr. Rogers, can this be amended again?
I'm afraid not, but the motion to amend could be withdrawn and restated.
Point of information on that, we can accept the amendment, that then changes the language. And then we can make a further amendment on the amended document, right? Because what I'd like to do after passing this amendment is strike in number two and appointed officials, because I I think that really solves the problem here. It preserves all the integrity that's necessary to have this document serve as a playbook for employees as well as for appointed officials. It's consistent with state code, although, you know, policies and procedures don't have to be. But this is the 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 source of of truth for for employees and and the ultimate guide. But the real contention is number two. So my next amendment, after we pass this one, would be to strike the the red in number two. And then I think we've satisfied most people's concerns.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded.
Just if I can make one more statement, sorry. Going through with this amendment, it takes off all of our boards and commissions. And I guess I I feel like this conflict of interest or personnel policy is intended to give everybody a playbook of what the expectations are. And so I guess I would lean more towards somebody scratching the amendment and let's remove number two and be done with it, but.
Well, just to be clear, I as I understand it, the we're not, at this point with this amendment, we wouldn't be changing or removing the appointed official part. We're only striking elected official and changing where it says city official to appointed only. So that does meet that requirement, if I understand that right, Mr. Miller?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Committees and and boards are appointed officials, correct? So so it would cover cover all that stuff that that Councilmember Miller just said, right? Okay.
It also removes from every one of these elected officials, correct?
Correct.
Part of which Director Rodenbeck just pointed out is essential for some of the work that we do in the city. So I guess that's my contention there.
Well, I would be, I mean, I don't have, I my main issue, I don't have an issue with having to disclose if you get a financial gain or you work from, I don't want anyone to have a conflict of interest in the means. I I definitely just have the biggest problem with number two because I feel like it crosses, it could cross over into political realms. So I would.
Yeah.
Have an amendment to the amendment?
Or just about no.
Have an elected officials always be always been considered employees because they collect salary from the city?
They're not employees.
They're not.
No.
Strike that thought.
That's what I needed to have clarified. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
So we either go forward with your amendment, Simon, or you remove your amendment, is that correct, Mr. Rogers? You can remove your amendment and somebody can make another one and we scratch number two and move on.
Good.
All right, I I will I will remove my amendment so that someone can come up with a feasibly better amendment that we all can agree on.
Okay, so we've removed the amendment to the amendment. Now we're back to the amendment. I don't remember the amendment.
It was to scratch everything, city officials and elected.
I'd like to make an amendment that we remove number two from this policy. Everything else stays the same.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded to remove number two from that policy. Any other discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
I'd like to ask Mr. Rogers' opinion on doing, by doing that, do we lose count or are we shooting yourself in the foot in any regard? Particularly, I mean, I appreciated your comment, an elected official is not an employee, even though we get paid a per diem. That.
Again, breaking up, Councilmember Cruz.
I'm I'm asking Mr. Rogers, if he can hear me, that if we remove item number two in its entirety, will that ruin the intent of what's been on the books for a number of years?
Okay, you got that?
I got that. It it certainly removes it. And was that the amendment or was the amendment to strike and and city officials for number two only? I guess I wasn't sure about that.
My amendment was just to strike elected officials from everything. That was my only, that that's all I wanted to do. That was my first motion. Motion to strike the word elected officials from everything. That was all.
Mr. Miller made a, or Councilmember Miller made, uh, what was yours, Councilmember Miller? That's what we were on, correct?
Yes, and that's an amendment to Councilman Sires. And I guess for clarification, it's just the and city officials for number two, if that's a beneficial thing for employees to have on there.
Right, so then that way, just to restate that, it's, is it worth dropping all of number two if all we need to do is strike the elected officials and keep number two and it's it adds some beneficial value to this process?
It means city officials.
Elected. Mine was only elected officials.
Well, it does state elected officials there. It says city.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Mr. Mayor, you said and elected officials, number two says and city officials. Okay.
I think that's a beneficial policy to have for employees. So if we just take city officials away, Simon, does that?
That that would alleviate most of my concern because my main concern, again, I want, I I do want to hold elected officials to the highest standard and there should not be any financial conflict of interest. But definitely, number two, I would be happy with removing and city officials from that because that that would alleviate any of my concerns of anything going on crossing entities or non-separation of power. Yes, to answer your question, yes.
So, Mr. Rogers, do, with that First Amendment that is already tied on this, do I, do we need to withdraw that motion or vote it down in order to go back to removing and city officials from number two?
Yeah, I I would, I would prefer that that motion to amend either be withdrawn or acted on. It'd be better, I guess, procedurally if it were withdrawn because we can't really go forward with this amendment right now. It's inconsistent with the amendment, the amendment to the amendment.
All right, so Mr. Sires would be willing to withdraw that amendment?
And what were we going to change it to then?
It would be removing and city officials from number two.
That, does that cover elected officials as well? Or we, we had talked about just absolutely removing number two.
Right, and and we decided that, or or council's question was that there was value to have that in.
And I signed my conflict of interest things too. I I signed that stuff because I don't want a conflict of interest, that's not it. But when we're governed by the state as elected officials and we come up and we represent the citizens, I want us to be, have the most free motion to disagree with the city or engage in something. Or, you know, when it starts to talk about disloyal, disruptive, or damaging to the city, we would never do that. That's where it becomes kind of strange.
We move the amendment. I don't know what the right terminology is. Let's just vote on it.
Yeah, we do need to move the amendment. If Mr. Rogers, is that correct? We need to move the amendment to strike and city officials from paragraph number two. Is there a motion for that?
Technically, isn't it, we're back to Mr. Sire's original amendment.
And was that city officials?
Elected officials was mine because there was a few places in there where it said elected officials. So if you just said elected and city officials, I'd be good with that if you just struck that right out.
You want to stricken from everything in here?
Yeah, city officials and elected officials. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Are we, is that correct, Mr. Rogers then? That's what we're voting on here is my amendment convoluted this now.
Man.
Yeah.
It's kind of both of them.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
Back to Mr. Sires. Correct?
Yeah, because if I understand, Councilmember Sire's amendment, that would make your amendment to the amendment moot because he's already doing that.
Okay, do you want, do you want me to change my amendment? Do you want me to withdraw that and make a new amendment that says elected officials and city officials?
No. Let's move, what's the terminology to move is vote?
Call the question.
Call the question.
Okay, so call the question on the motion, which is to strike, okay, who who can restate that for me?
Strike elected official was his exact words on the motion or close to his exact words.
Strike any word relating to elected officials.
Come on. Any word related to elected officials has been motioned and seconded, right? So now we're calling the question and this is a voice vote, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, I'm seeing some nays, so nays, hand up. So Susan, Frank, Mark, Nick, and Simon, so the nays have it. So that did not pass, which brings us back to the original item.
Can I make a motion then?
Yes, please.
Everything's out, everything else is off table, so I'd like to make a motion to approve as staff recommendation, with the exception of taking off and city officials from item number two in the eight oh seven conflict of interest.
Second.
Second.
The motion is seconded, final discussion? Okay, seeing none, then this requires a
Let's do a roll call.
Roll call though. Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Everybody know what they're voting on?
Yep.
Susan's amendment.
Okay, all right. Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that was only item fourteen.
We're not, we're not finished, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Now, now we have to go back, after the amendment has been adopted, now we have to consider the personnel policies as amended.
Okay, so the motion is seconded as a review as amended and any final discussion from council?
I thought that that motion approved all the personnel policies with just that one exception.
Well, we we just approved striking and city officials from two. Now we're going to take up everything as amended.
So following, following our process, it's been motioned and seconded, I'll have it for council discussion. And seeing nine, I do have to open it to the public, so Mr. Skeen, go ahead, sir.
You're still, you're still on thirteen, right?
We're on item fourteen, sir.
Pardon?
We're on item fourteen now.
Okay. Let, let, if I may make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
How many of you have attempted to find the packet by going through the site?
Mr. Skeen, all of you. Right now, we're only addressing item fourteen, a resolution approving and adopting certain personnel policies. We're not talking about.
Yeah, I, I, but I'm I'm raising a point because I've been told that I need to go to the packet.
And do you have a question related to approving and adopting revised personnel?
Like on this, see, but on this particular point, I found it impossible to even get to the packet. And so the reason for wanting to talk about this is that as probably ninety nine point nine percent of the public out here, we don't know what the council knows and we do know, we do need.
Mr. Skeen, I'm going to rule you out of order a second time, sir. Do you have a question or comment related to the resolution itself, sir?
Okay, well, what what point of order did I violate? What did I violate?
You're allowed to speak on this item and this item alone is part.
I am, I am speaking on this item.
You're you're not talking about general access to the personnel or to the council packet we discussed.
I'm saying.
Third time, sir, and I'm cutting you off. I hate to have to do that, but we, comments have to be germane to the discussion itself and and his are not. So it's been motioned and seconded, any final question or comment from council? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
I don't even know what we're voting on, to be honest, so I'll abstain.
Would you like me to repeat?
Yes.
So that you can vote, Mrs. DeBurg?
Sure.
So this is a resolution approving and adopting revised personnel policies with amendments.
And the amendments are, you mean with the changes in red?
Correct, that, no, this is the changes that were brought up by council members. And Ms. Danison, would you like to read that for us?
Well, I didn't get Susan's last motion, but this would be the motion. Okay, this would be the motion approving and adopting certain revised personnel policies with the adopted amendment that was made by Susan and seconded by Nick.
So basically agreeing to all the changes with number two with the red words out. Yes.
So that's a, yes, yes.
Thank you, Susan.
Cruz?
Yes.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Yep.
Sires?
Nay.
Tyber?
Yes.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Then that moves us over to item fifteen, which is a resolution approving and adopting the city's FY twenty one payroll resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion seconded, any discussion from council? Or from the public? Seeing none? And this, it's been motioned and seconded, it requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Nope.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item seventeen is a resolution approving the recommendation of the Director of Public Safety Services and the City Administrator by appointing Craig Birdy as the Acting Police Chief. Is there a motion?
To approve?
Seconded, Mr. Tyber, you have brought this up for consideration.
I'm I'm just wondering why we're at this point. Acting Director or Chief of Police, Birdy has been in this role for a hundred and eighty days. uh, Birdy has been in this role for a hundred and eighty days. And I believe that we're through the interviewing process at this point, and so, our ordinances are written that the Director of Public Safety is supposed to make a re- recommendation, followed by the, uh, City Administrator, and then, uh, the Mayor, uh, forms a recommendation. First, I, I don't know if these are two related, uh, events, but, uh, you know, I was hoping for some clarification because you stated in a blog post that this upcoming election is a proxy on the, well, I'm summarizing, uh, Mr. Mayor, but is a proxy on the, uh, Chief of Police. So, could, could you just clarify maybe your comments and then, uh, whether or not this is a related?
Certainly, I, I've not received the, uh, recommendation from the Director of Public Safety or the Administrator yet. And for my case, uh, if I did receive those recommendations, I'd wait till after the special election resolve. Because I believe that it should be, uh, seven elected council members who make that determination.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Sires?
Uh, so this is another temporary appointing of, of Mr. Birdy? How many days is this one for?
Hundred and eighty days, just as the last.
Another hundred and eighty?
At, at most.
Okay.
Per, question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Harding?
Um, we have to do this tonight because the first hundred and eighty days is up and we haven't finished the process, correct?
Correct.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Miller?
And, Mr. Gaines, or somebody comment on what the delay is, or are we waiting for something? I thought all the interviews were completed as well. Are we all waiting for the election to happen, or what, is, is there another delay that I'm not aware of?
Uh, no, there, there, uh, I have not gotten the, uh, the actual memo to the Mayor yet with, uh, with, uh, Director Olson and my recommendation, but we have that recommendation coming forward. Um, but the Mayor did let us know that he would not be putting this on, uh, the agenda until after, uh, the election, uh, tomorrow.
If I can make a comment, I guess I, I don't feel like we're doing these guys any justice, holding out on this. If this election goes to a runoff, I think Councilman Tyber's proven that he's fully capable of making decisions in this role. He approved a ninety million dollar budget. I don't, I, I, I can understand your point, Mayor, but for the, for the gentlemen that are running for this role, it gets delayed to another runoff and then we're out another three months? I, I, I guess I don't agree.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion from council on this? Yes, Ms. DeBoer?
Definitely wanna thank Mr. Officer Birdy for the fine job he's doing.
Certainly, yeah. Other comments from council? Okay, from the public? Seeing none? Then this requires a roll call vote?
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz? And I?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Dara?
Yes.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item, moving us out of the resolution calendar, is, uh, bills and payroll, is there a motion to approve?
Uh, I think we're missed, uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Number thirty-seven.
Another page back in here. Item thirty-seven, thank you, item thirty-seven is an ordinance, uh, passing an ordinance amending chapter two, uh, administration of the code of ordinances relative to establishing a human resources division within the Department of Finance and Business Operations upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded, um, open for council discussion? Seeing none, uh, all for the public, anyone for the public wish to, uh, speak on this item? I see.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't speak soon enough, but, uh, we're, we have two more readings of this, right? Before we, um, start hiring a, a, looking at a human resource position? Is that my, is that, am I right about that?
Right, because this is a, a ordinance, so it requires three readings to be.
Okay, so, uh, end of July, early August before we move in that direction, two more readings.
Yeah, mid-August.
Okay.
Um, just to clarify too, Councilman Dara, what we would do on that third reading then is also bring the job class forward that same night, but we figured we would wait, you know, to make sure that it would pass the first two readings.
That makes, makes sense, I get it.
So we would do that all on that same night.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you, any other discussion from council on this item? Then this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, now I can go to allowing bills and payroll, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Then this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, that brings us to city council referrals, where the reading referrals, um, council wish to bring forward? Uh, yes, Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Um, I had sent an email that I was interested in having us discuss, um, having committees again instead of just the committee of the whole. And I was wondering if, if we can make a referral for that, um, I thought that the email I sent would go into the packet.
Okay, um, no, I didn't, didn't realize that was for everyone, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
So, yeah, what, what, uh, Ms. DeBoer had asked was if, uh, rather than just the single committee of the whole uh, in the admin committee, could we, as a council, or you as a council revisit, um, reestablishing the committees that had been in place, uh, back in the two thousands, so.
At least talk about the pros and the cons of having them.
Okay, so, um, with that, would, would you wanna, uh, put forward a motion to have that at committee of the whole? Or, or how would you like to do that, Ms. DeBoer?
I think that's about the only way we can do it.
Okay, or, or, or a work session, we could discuss it, a work session too. Either one.
Um, either one's fine.
Okay, um, how about we, I, I, I'd prefer to do it as a work session, uh, so that we can discuss it and not have to have too much count, or, uh, city staff prep work required for it, like a presentation, so.
Okay.
Um, it, it's been motioned to have a, a council, uh, work session to discuss, um, the reestablishment of committees, is there a second?
Second.
Yes, the motion is seconded, any council discussion?
Yeah, uh, I think it's a great idea, um, it might be, I don't want a lot of work for staff, but, uh, it's been a while since we've had those committees, it might not be bad, uh, for staff to pull up out of our archives, uh, what those committees were and kind of how the, what the makeup was and their purpose. I don't think, we used, at one time, I think we had seven or something, didn't we, Susan?
Yeah, well, that one was, uh, we never had more than three.
But, uh, three or four, uh, I think it just engages us as individual council members more with individual staff members, and there's a sense of teamwork there that I think, uh, we're missing.
Okay, so, um, it's been motioned and seconded, and, um, if this is approved, I would look, uh, to have this probably um, mid-August to late August, so we could, uh, hash through it pretty quickly. Any final discussion? Then, uh, this is a voice vote, correct? So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes, excellent. Um, any other referrals?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, now, Councilman Sires, or is it Cruz? Go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, I wanna make a referral to committee to discuss a modification of our street parking ordinance, specifically, uh, um, not allowing commercial trailers in residential zone area. Had problems in the, in the community with a couple situations that are, uh, abusing it and would like to have a discussion on that, how we can rectify that.
So it's been motioned, is there a second for that item?
I'll second that.
Yeah, Councilman Miller seconds, uh, council discussion?
With, with that question, would that be in the form of a work session? I ca- I didn't hear where he.
To committee is my, well, it could be a work session.
This is an ordinance that we pre-passed, where.
Get your banjo away, Mark.
Mr. Cruz, you cut out again. Attorney Rogers brought to us a year ago, and we laxed on all of the requirements for on-street parking for commercial trucks and everything else, and now we're seeing a situation where somebody's taking advantage of it, so.
Okay, so it would go to committee of the whole?
I would assume.
That probably makes the most sense, because you would need council work to happen ahead of time for us to have a consensus and a motion off of.
Alright, that, that helps me out, thanks.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded, any final discussion on it? Then it's a voice vote, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes as well. Any final items for referral? Okay, so, moving into, uh, council updates, does council have any updates to provide?
Aye, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilman Sires?
I, I just have a couple real quick things, it was my mom's birthday today, I wanna wish her a happy birthday and I love her. And I wanted just to remind people that tomorrow is voting day, and there are five good candidates, and I'd love for any one of them to be on there with us, so just don't forget, uh, pick your candidate, find out as much as you can. There's some good stuff on the Waterloo Courier where you can look if you're still undecided, and tomorrow's voting day, and I believe it's at Gallagher Blue Dorm.
Right, that's the only polling location this year.
Yep, and that's all I have, and thank you very much, and I'm sorry if I caused anybody any grief.
Okay, so, any other council updates? Yes, Councilmember DeBoer, go ahead.
Um, are we, I don't know if council updates is, is really the right place, but I was wondering if I can get an update from staff. Um, we've talked a couple times about that roadway connection from Ironwood to Green Hill. And I wondered if we can get an update on, um, if there's been any update on that.
Certainly, so, Council, uh, Mr. Gaines?
Anthony, do you wanna start off with that?
I can, yes, um, you know, we've had questions, continuing questions about the road connection of Ironwood to the Green Hill Road Extension area, and that road connection is development dependent. Um, we have received and reviewed several different development proposals, um, dating back to May of two thousand seventeen. Um, however, none of those have progressed through Planning and Zoning Commission and then ultimately City Council for approval in order to trigger start of construction to build, uh, that road connection. There is, um, have a small, uh, piece there left at the north end of Prairie West subdivision. Um, it would be, I believe the name of the subdivision that we've been considering was Village West, if I'm not mistaken, where Ironwood would then connect into Green Hill Road Extension. So, um, to date, there have been a couple issues related to the stormwater plan, um, but we're hopeful that we'll continue to see that development move forward, be able to bring that forward for approval, uh, that would then trigger the road connection. Um, so right now, there are two ways to access the Prairie Winds and Prairie West area. Uh, Eric Road is one of those, and then, uh, Richard Road connecting into Harriet Lane, uh, to Hudson Road is the second one.
And then if I could just a- add on to that, we did look at some temporary solutions, um, to just get construction equipment to come out that way. Uh, unfortunately, the, the price that we were getting in order to, uh, there's a drainage way you have to cross in there, uh, was starting to get pretty expensive just for a temporary solution, so that really didn't seem like a, a realistic, um, solution.
Well, that temporary solution, was that something we were going to be able to assess back to the developer since he's been not getting this built?
No, we wouldn't, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other council updates? Alright, so, uh, before going into staff updates, I just wanted to make a quick note, um, share my screen here. Uh, just to note the passing of, uh, one of our boards and commission members, Janine Johnson, uh, was on the Historic Preservation Commission and has been very involved in, um, city history topics and art and culture for, for decades. Um, certainly will, will, uh, miss her, I really enjoyed talking with her about Cedar Falls history. Uh, she was buried, uh, in Greenwood Cemetery on the twenty-fourth, um, and our condolences go out to her family. Think she'll allow me to share that. So then moving into staff updates, uh, Mr. Gaines, uh, you had some comments tonight about closures and things for COVID.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, Mayor, uh, last week, we had a couple of, uh, reported positive cases with city employees at the, uh, the rec center and the falls, and also in our public works department. So, um, those employees have been, uh, are, are doing well, but they actually are, uh, are off work right now. And we've done some contract, some contact tracing with those employees to find out who else within our organization. They may have, um, uh, I don't wanna say infected, but, uh, that was in close contact. CDC guidelines that we're using is within six feet for, uh, fifteen minutes, so. Uh, total, we have had five positive cases for employees, and then, uh, seven employees that are out with, uh, 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 contact tracing, so. Just kind of a real three, both, uh, rec center and, uh, uh, the falls was shut down. They were cleaned extensively, and, um, uh, they're both obviously now back open, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Um, I was just curious if Director Rindbeck could, could give us a thirty-second infomercial on the library's reopening and how they're doing that.
I know they were, um, opening kind of a phased-in to do appointments, and so people can make appointments in the hour. Um, you know, I know they had extreme success with the curbside, um, pickup. I think they were talking about how they had hundreds every day of orders that they were doing, so obviously people have been excited um, about getting their library and materials, so, um, hopefully we can kinda do that phased-in, things will go well, and then we can continue, you know, kinda, um, keep opening more.
So you can set up a one-hour browsing appointment?
Yeah.
Um, they're, I think they're allowing up to thirty people in at one time, and they're just closed from twelve to two for cleaning, and then they reopen for the next, uh, group of people. So, yes, Councilmember Harding?
Mayor, I just had a question for, uh, staff, has there been any talk about, uh, possibly opening up day passes for the, for the falls, um, or reconsidering or relooking at that? The way we've been doing that, I've had a number of citizens ask if it would be possible to do day passes, uh, considering suppose, uh, the numbers are not super high there. Is there an update we can do on that?
Sure, um, you know, we wanted to monitor what the response would be in terms of the use of the season passes purchased. We have had, uh, quite a few season passes where if everybody were to trigger the use of those at the same time, we would be at our capacity. So we wanted to watch that here, we've, we have two weeks of data, of course, the first week, we had several days where it was raining, and so, uh, the pool was either closed for a portion of the time or all of the time, so, um, we thought, once we have some good information to review what's happening, we could look at whether there are other possibilities, uh, that we could offer to the community.
Do, do we have a timeline on when we feel like we'll have enough data by chance, or? When we, I guess, a timeline on when we may reassess it?
I think it's gonna be a combination of, uh, of looking at that, our staffing levels right now. We don't really have as many lifeguards, and some of those are out with, uh, that does positive testing. The other thing is when, uh, Chris Schontag and Bruce Brink actually really feel comfortable with where they are, um, on the opening. So, um, we're really gonna rely a little bit on their, uh, expertise, and it's probably gonna be by the end of this week if they make a recommendation to, to start to, um, move maybe the number of, of maximum, uh, uh, patrons we have in there. Also with, do we wanna start opening that up to, uh, um, uh, day passes, like you, you had mentioned?
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Okay, like, uh, segue or additional question on that from Mr. Gaines?
Certainly.
Do we turn off the day passes at some point in the regular course or in the past years? Would we hit a capacity level that, you know, the, the season passes get in first and then the day passes follow, or how's that operationally run?
So in, in the past, it's never been that the day passes get in, in our. And are actually, without COVID, take, take that out of it. I want to say, Stephanie, isn't it like 1,800 we can get in the pool? It may even be a little bit more with regard to a daily limit. So very few times have we actually had to have a line outside saying that you have to wait to get in. But with putting this, with the CDC guidelines and some of those, putting the 600 limit on there right now. We know that with the number of day passes, we could actually end up getting those lines. And so do you have day passes versus season passes? And how does that work and who gets in first?
We know often how high we get down in this couple of weeks, did we get close to the 600 at all? Or did we maybe not have hot enough days to draw in a lot of people?
It really depends on the day. Even a really hot day, you might see attendance drop off a bit because people aren't even interested in being out at all. So but depending on the day, we've seen our high has been around 150 to 200 people at any time.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Miller.
Question for Mr. Gaines. In, in terms of COVID cases within the city, I had, I had heard about the Rec Center, I'd heard about the Falls, but I hadn't heard about Public Works. Was that a late-in-the-day thing that we discovered? Or is there a different procedure for Public Works or?
So the Public Works cases were actually in the cemetery crew. So it wasn't really a facility that we had to shut down, and they weren't, Chase can maybe explain it a little bit better. But they weren't in a facility that had to be shut down. They weren't in something that we would deem necessary for a press release.
Gotcha, okay, just curious.
The other thing, you know, we want to make people aware, and we want to be as transparent as we can with any of these facilities, especially when they're open to the public. But we do have to be very careful with regard to HIPAA. And these employees still have rights that we've got to make sure we protect.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so any, anything else for staff updates, Mr. Gaines?
I think that covers it, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So that moves us over into public forums. So speakers will have up to one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics, Germaine to city business. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak tonight? See a few hands going up. So first, I'll start off with phone number that ends in 2211. So name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Wendy Hoofnickel, I'm at 3119 Grand Boulevard. I, I'm a little confused. I thought Agenda Items, I'm sorry to back this up, but I thought Agenda Items 14, 15, and 17 had been polled for discussion. But I only heard discussion of 14 and 17. Has 15 been approved by, by default? Or has, was it just an oversight? Or did I just miss it when I was listening in on the meeting?
Yeah, 15 was resolution approving and adopting the FY 21 payroll resolution. And that, yeah, that was then motion seconded and passed by council.
Okay, that happened so fast then after 14 that I must have missed it, thank you, sorry.
Oh, thanks for that.
Sorry, thank you, take care, bye-bye.
Good night. So I see, let's see, Brent Dostrom, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Brent Dostrom, 5016 Samantha Circle in Cedar Falls, Iowa. Wanted to talk tonight about the West Fort Crossing Development Agreement. That was, that was earlier and wasn't able to speak. So the develop, this has been something that we've been working with city staff for roughly 18 months to bring it here to today. And last weekend, I was given a draft development agreement from city staff, of which I forwarded on to council and my engineer on Monday. We had a short week last week, and Mrs. Howard reached out to me today and asked me if I had any comments, of which I said, I know for sure we're going to have one, I don't know what else we're going to have. And tonight, it was portrayed as if there were multiple comments and things. And I believe in the future that if you're going to give a development agreement, that you're agreeing to something for 170 acres of land. I think it would be respectful to any developer to have more than four business days to review that development agreement and be given the opportunity for their, for their team to review. Within that development agreement is a first-of-its-kind for residential development is asking for the development group to make a connection from Union Road all the way to the new high school. Just for perspective, as I know the map didn't look all that large, is that is 5,000 feet of road. So that, that is estimated at $3 million. And this is, by signing this agreement, I would be required to build that road within one year of the high school getting built. This is 500 lots. And if only lots were bought in this development, that would be five years, which is highly unlikely. So this is more than likely a 15-year development. And during a time of COVID with economic uncertainty, to ask a developer to guarantee a $3 million road without any guarantee of any lot sales or any economic gain. And for the first of its time, I find that as an overreach of city staff. And I'm wondering that why I'd be the first one to be made to do this, this type of agreement and this type of timeline. If, if you'll see, Phase One actually connects Union Road right to Lexington. So if we're talking about neighborhood connections and circulation, it's actually achieved right there in Phase One. Lexington has had two dead ends and currently has a very long street, longer than Eric Road, that dead ends and has not had circulation for years. So Phase One actually circulates that. Future phases after the high school allows even more circulation throughout the neighborhood. So wanted to get that, I don't know if I'm going to be able to make it to future meetings, but I wanted to at least bring forward the points that I had and, and some of the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dostrom. Our next speaker for public comment, we've got Mr. Skane, so go ahead, sir.
Yes, Jim Skane, 2215 Clay Street.
Yes, Mr. Skane.
I have a number, yes, as a public forum speech, which I guess is timed at five minutes. I want to bring out a, a number of issues. The first issue is the word "germaine" that's in the forum rules. It is a violation of freedom of speech because it gives to anyone who is a city official or council person the right to say that whatever a person is saying is out of order. And in that particular situation, I wish that you would know what happened to me as a result of that word being in there. Because four times, I was removed from the council meeting when I was properly recognized to speak because someone considered, in fact, one, one time it was you, Mr. Mayor, that what I was saying was not germane. And every time that I was ruled out of order and then removed, obviously, Mr. Miller was part of the process as well. Now, in this particular case, three of the four times, I did not object very much. But the last time, I had a number of things I wanted to say. And Mayor Brown ruled me out of order and ordered me removed. In that case, the Public Safety Director, Jeff Olson, physically moved me out of it. Birdie was there as well, but the real damage was done by Jeff Olson because he used his shoe against my leg and created wounds that are just now healing. And in fact, caused me to have a hospital stay. Now, this was not the way that a person should be removed. And it was completely because the illegal word "germaine" was at the base of it. Because what I was saying was not objectionable. It was only objectionable to Mayor Brown. And as I said, on one occasion, it was objectionable to you. So please consider taking germane out of the rules and going back to a First Amendment situation. The second thing is that there has been police malpractice in the city. I have a number of cases that have come to my attention. How much more time do I have, by the way, Mr. Mayor?
It's one minute and 45 seconds.
Okay, and so this whole business of having your council meetings where both the Public Safety Director and the Police Chief, at the time it was Assistant Police Chief, is very intimidating. In fact, some, some people have told me that they wouldn't give a, a speech because they didn't want to be taken out of the, out of the chambers. Now, the last, the last thing I want to say, and I hope I have time for it, is that for six months, Mr. Mayor, you have violated the Iowa law with regard to the 2824. It has been declared non-void, has not been executed. And every one of your work sessions and Committee of the Whole are ill-advised because there's no public participation. So the last thing I, I want to say is that, Mr. Mayor, I think for all the good of the people of Cedar Falls, you should resign. And, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Skane.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jeff Olson, can I comment on that?
Yes, please, Director Olson, I was going to comment as well.
Okay, thank you. So as many of you recall, Mr. Skane was called out of order, and he was removed from the council chambers. He did file a complaint with the city concerning that removal. And that was, that was investigated by an outside agency. There was videotape, actually not tape, but there was video of that incident. And the complaint of injuries or any abuse was completely unfounded and, and is untrue. And this is the second time in recent council meetings that he's mentioned that. So I just feel that it's important that we explain what happened with that incident.
Thank you, Director Olson. Yeah, and just to follow up with that, I understand, I've seen the information from that report that Director Olson was exonerated or, or the, the handling was as good as it could be. Now, one thing that I've, I've directed during my time as mayor is to change the process a bit. So there actually is two uniformed officers who would escort a person out. Part of that is, is part of her police presence, that they're in the uniform, and that they also have their body cams activated. So I don't want to put the Public Safety Director in that kind of position ever again. So with that, I also would just say too, that for the germaneness part, that's something that I'm sure has come up in past meetings about whether that's allowed or not allowed. It's important practice to ensure that our meetings stay on track and that we, anything that involves city business, even discussion of the word "germaine" is "germaine" because it applies to city business. But only the mayor can make that determination as the presiding official. So when I was a council member, I didn't force anyone out. I referred to the mayor, and he agreed. And so I certainly take on that role and, and listen to what everyone says very closely to ensure that it is in keeping with the council rules. And I think that's all I have to comment on for that. So, and, and council, I will say too, no issue raised by a speaker under the rules shall be debated by the city council. So.
I was hoping for a staff comment regarding Mr. Dostrom's point, that I, I would agree. That's fair, is it not?
Yes, because you're not asking for council to debate it, so certainly, point of clarification is fine.
If Karen or Stephanie can comment on that. I feel like we've had other situ, we, we have another situation in the city right now, don't we? Where a road was supposed to be constructed or something, and I, wherever you have.
So I would just comment that the topic on the agenda tonight was the rezoning. And that was discussed at two different meetings at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And prior to bringing that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, of course, I went through the Staff Technical Review Committee. And we worked with the developer on all the things that staff had brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss. So the, the draft agreement that was in your package just for information purposes was submitted to Mr. Dostrom last week. But it just is a formalization of what was discussed as conditions at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I just, you know, that's a little bit of clarification on, on that item.
Okay, thank you. I see no one else wishing to speak for public comment. So before I move to adjourn, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Tyber. Depending on the outcome of the elections tomorrow, this might be your last council meeting. Thank you very much for your service. If the outcome is unresolved tomorrow, then we'll see you in the next council meeting. So that said, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Motioned and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.